Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting in order for December first. Twenty twenty-two, all three selectmen are present. The town administrator is, will be entering the room momentarily. Mike, you have no microphone. It's okay.
Well, I would record it somewhere like that also.
Okay. I'm back better.
I just learned something like, is nothing hiding over there?
All right.
You know, that was a good try, that one right there.
Okay. For the, for the members of the public, we're gonna take a thirty-second delay for their tape recorder for amendment ten. I need a tape recorder. Ah, it was over there, okay. Okay. As I said earlier, we are bringing the Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting in order for December first. All three selectmen present, town administrator is present. We have in the audience, we have the Chief of Police, Chief Bermanard, and recording for the citizens of Dunbar is Mr. Lee Murray-Dell. Okay, gentlemen, we've got a busy night tonight, so let's get the show on the road and, uh, approve the, um, regular meeting minutes from November seventeen, twenty twenty-two as amended. My second. Any discussion on those?
No.
Okay. I did make a few small, uh, clerical changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the six-thirty P M non-public meeting minutes of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that motion. And those were amended too, is that right?
No.
Okay. And I just, for the discussion, I just wanna make a point that ask needs to be sealed. This re, this, uh, this discussion regarding, uh, uh, legal actions in the town, so I'm gonna ask that be sealed. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm gonna go rate the public comment. Okay, closed public comment. Uh, John Stevens is not here, we bypass John. I just wanna, uh, I'm going out of order, I want, we're gonna spend more, minimal time on this, uh, uniform contract, but, um, transfer station has a, uh, we have a, uh, a new budget that went up a little bit, but I think it's, uh, the transfer issue manager, Mr. Woody Bond, is very pleased with, uh, late, the actions of his company lately, and he has no problems with that. Did anyone want to take a gander at that?
I attached the old contract on that page, you can compare it, there are very little change. And this is for uniforms to a base transfer station and the highway.
Did you have a chance to get the question next to you? I'm not happy with the service. Initially, Woody was not, but the thing is, uh, they seem to have turned the corner. And, uh, so he's been, uh, he said they've been doing very well there. I have no problem, it looks like they might have juggled some of this, somebody went down. I'm good with it?
Yeah.
I think I got it signed. We'll take a vote out of it. And for the public, uh, we use uniforms at the, um, transfer station. So the gentleman can have, uh, sometimes the work isn't exactly, um, very clean.
And we do that.
And the highway department asks for both, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of the acceptance of this contract as presented?
Aye.
I need a second person. Second, all in favor now? Aye.
We're talking on line.
Yeah, I seen, seen where I signed last time.
Okay, gotcha.
And Lynn, if you'd just put it in the town email at the bottom.
We have to have a meeting in twenty-two.
Okay.
Everybody bids.
Oh, you are. It can be a short one. Okay. All right, um, now, this is the part of meeting where we roll up our sleeves and get down to the nitty-gritty. We're gonna talk about, uh, what you do begin.
Okay, can I just get you rolling here?
Please, go ahead, Lynn, I'll let you.
I can choose the way you wanna go.
All right.
So the goal of the police department, the first cover sheet is patrol officers full-time. They're all broken down in the short sheets behind. This is the research that I had done with municipalities in the same population range, two thousand and four ninety-nine. And then I implemented Chris Remmard's, um, wages. And then on the very last page, I've been working diligently to establish the six-step wage scale. And the way I make the step wage scale is on the back of this page is to, obviously, I worked with Chris's numbers, um, set them in step six, and then proceeded to decrease each step by two-point-five percent. So that's the proposed draft step wage scale that would be implemented if the board approves his recommendation for new wages for his, um, full-time police officer, full-time sergeant, police chief, that's still something that would have to be negotiated with the board, police officer part-time, police admin part-time, and then he also included in his, um, summary report that he had a spot for full-time trainee through the academy and field training.
And that's the rate that we pay for an officer by officer coming in order before they go on sole patrol. Okay, um, I have no issues with this at all, David. Just I have no issues, any, uh, any other little comment, just go ahead and speak up.
No, I think these are all reasonable requests. Yeah, I think they've tripped in exactly what we wanted, so we wanted to look at, uh, surrounding towns and not be the highest anymore, not be the lowest. I meant the lowest anymore, not the highest, but, uh,
The only thing that's not addressed is the, is the chief sergeant, he, he's, uh, on a honest speed, didn't wanna put his name in there or advocate himself, but I think we should advocate for that.
Right, but on the other way, I mean, you asked him to do that, so his revised summary report, which does have a copy of?
Well, it is on, yes, exactly.
I did add it in there with the regular, based on his recommendation and, uh, summary report.
Yeah, talking about the file sheet.
So if that's the case, then the board will have to review it and then amend his contract.
You see that on the last sheet, David?
I do.
Right? And then, um, what step is achieved at now?
I meant, uh, step one.
Step one?
Okay. So it's zero, two, four, six, eight, ten, so.
Just so I can see the difference in the, uh, line.
Yeah. Now, the thing is, uh, the, the only complicated factor here is, uh, the way I negotiated the contract with him, he gets a thousand dollars, one thousand dollar increase. Is a, so, uh, Chief Bermanard came in with minimal experience. And we talked and acknowledged that, however, every year he gets experience, we were gonna obviously pay one thousand dollars, which is in this contract as we speak now, it doesn't apply to this. That's above and beyond to this.
And I think it should be.
Okay, I just wanna, I just, I just point of order here, I just wanna make sure that you all remember that. Okay? Yeah, okay. I was saying, I, I have no problems as president to include his.
So what, the work that, um, Chris put into the summary sheet enabled me to work on the six-step wage scale, and then I took this template and created a separate department, six-step wage scale. Each, that, we, we will be covering others in the same location, so, and the same method, I would say, without, uh, just suffering.
Chris, you, from your numbers and Lynn's wage scale study here?
Yeah, so if you look at my revised wage study, my numbers are a little slightly higher, like between fifty and a hundred dollars, uh, depending on the step. The reason being is, um, I rounded it up, so I think it threw my numbers off a little bit, so her, her numbers are perfectly fine.
Okay. Okay. Can we move on to the other one?
Okay.
All right, you wanna go to, let's do highway, because it's a short.
Okay.
All right, so in the, the two attached forms, highway equipment, which is what Dave recommended, we put our, um, full-time office, um, worker, because he's a, he's a C D L.
Okay.
And I looked at the different categories.
What page are you starting on?
The first page, highway equipment, that would actually be our full-time, uh, employee.
Yep.
He falls in, in three of five, in this particular department, there are a lot, many different titles. So I kinda looked at just equipment operator and public work staff in that range, because I reported him as public work staff, but obviously, he's got more credentials than just that particular level, so this is where, um,
Those are the only times you filed those types of forms?
For those types, because the others are, um, combination of, um, public works and recreation and a, a large number of different responsible superintendent, so I took all of that out and I, because I have my different pages, I just stuck to the first one. So.
What is it with Stephanie right now?
He is currently at step three.
Which I see on the right-hand side, is that correct?
That's correct.
Twenty-four, nine.
And, and so basically, what I have done with the step wage scale, if you go to the back page, I, I recommended a one percent increase, because he's right in the middle, he's not at the bottom in that field. So I added one percent to his current step and implemented new wage on step three of the six step. So then, we would then increase each step from step three up two and a half, two and a half, and two and a half, and do the same thing subtracting towards the end. But what is beneficial for him is because he has the longevity with this new six step, he would jump to step six. So therefore, his new rate, if the board approves it, would be to twenty-seven ninety-six, because he's already got the seniority of ten years.
You said step six, but then you gave us a number for step eight. Or step five.
Twenty-seven, twenty-six.
Oh, the, the numbers in parentheses are the year, commensurate with years of service.
Oh.
Right.
Years of service, okay.
Years of service, I'm sorry.
Um, so how is he getting up to from step three?
Well, currently, he's at the top step, we only have three steps.
Yeah.
So because he falls under step six, ten-year service, I've adjusted the increase to the third step, which is where he's at today, and then I've added the two and a half, two and a half, and two and a half, so he technically gets, what, seventy?
But you've got twenty-five ninety-two there, and he's at twenty-five ninety-seven now.
It, it takes about, it takes about five seconds.
Okay, I, I can, I can.
The one percent should went to the twenty-five ninety-seven.
That's what he's at now, right, twenty-five ninety-seven.
Right now, he's at twenty-five seventy-one.
Twenty-five seventy-one.
And I guess my, my.
What's step three mean over here at twenty-five ninety-seven?
On my back page, it says twenty-five ninety-two on step three, when it just said.
Go to your first page.
Your first page, all the way to the right.
Step three says twenty-five ninety-seven.
Right, so my numbers are my.
Oh, that's the one percent.
One percent, yeah, gotcha.
Okay.
So that should be twenty-five ninety-seven, which I can adjust by.
Oh, okay, I'm just wondering why they were down.
Right.
Okay, so that's twenty-five ninety-seven there.
And then it would be plus two-point-five, 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 and he is eligible for the ten years, so he would move up to step six.
So, um.
He would be at twenty-seven, might be a couple pennies more.
But you label it as two-and-a-half percent increase, it's really a one percent on step three, right?
Correct. To get him.
So you should label that at one percent?
Well, no, because if you do the math subtracting, I still have to get to that middle number.
So you, you should track it down and up, yeah, and then you go back, you can read your goals, okay?
Correct.
All right.
It's a lot of adjustment, and that's what I had to really think about is who is filling the position? What seniority are they at, and wha, how can you move them within the population of other towns to be comparable in his wage scale?
You know, the fact he works unsupervised, is diligent, he doesn't speed, he, safety is utmost for this gentleman. I, I mean, he does his job without, without, I, I mean, that's just him aside, but just looking at the salaries, the top salary, looking at someone over here in step three, and some of the other heavy equipment operators, I, I think it's right in the range where we wanna have.
Yeah, so it will bring him up to the next level, there'll be four of, um, five towns.
Yeah, but we just don't have a lot of towns to pick from, because he's not, he's not.
So he's going up to the twenty-seven, twenty-six, and you.
Correct, twenty-seven ninety-six, yeah. Might be up anymore, I'll have to check my numbers.
Justin, any problems with this?
Oh, he's going only to level six.
Yes, because he's got more than ten years' experience.
Right, because he's got ten years.
Because see on the first page, since data higher was two thousand, he's now at ten years of service.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I really had to think about how I can make this as clear as possible.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's good.
And I really was also including the other towns that the board wanted us to look at and consider.
And the, the problem is, he's not a groundsman, it is, uh, just common labor. And so the, the second page, uh, I don't think we really had a merit.
There's equipment operators in a lot of these other towns, and I mean, most of them can't let it greater too.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay, if you wanna look at the next one, this is the highway worker, that's a part-time position. Again, I'm trying to stay on top of all the different departments.
Okay.
We really don't have anyone filling that position currently. Um, we have one that's on call, Jeff Crosby's son, Jackson, he's currently at the twenty-one forty-five. So I added a three percent to that, because he is fourth from the bottom, lowest of sixteen towns. So I increased his a little bit more, brought the new step wage three at twenty-two oh nine, and then, if you look to the last page, I put the twenty-two oh nine in step three, and then I went up two and a half.
Gotcha.
And then decreased two and a half.
I have no, no problems with this at all.
That looks good.
Okay.
We'll do some more.
Next one, administrative office. I kinda put in, uh, every, all the singles that I have throughout the town that have different type of responsibilities, but it was easy for me to just put them on one sheet.
Which one are you on?
The administrative office, administrative. The left sheet's on here, I have to forget it.
Okay.
But it is, but it is similar to the, no, I'm talking about the, the.
That last paper.
That last weight step wage scale.
Oh.
I mean, I mean, uh, for you now. But they are essentially here, essentially here, I just have, I'm gonna duplicate what I did for the other department.
Just tell us a little circle on the right-hand side.
Okay, so if you look at the first position, building admin land use, that's a full-time position. The person is at, the low is twenty-three sixty-six, the high is twenty-six, twenty-eleven. In her, if you go to the page behind it, she is almost in the middle. Other towns, like size.
Yeah, which her job was a newer job, which we kinda updated that as someone's hired, so.
Right, I would have expected that.
Right, so I took her position as step two, increased it four percent, brought it to the twenty-five eighty-three, and put that dollar amount in step two on the six step, step scale.
Correct.
And did the same thing, increased it two and a half, two and a half, two and a half, so next year, she'll actually, and actually.
If she's in the middle, why didn't you go four percent on this one?
To be comparable with the other administrative positions.
No, no, some, some of them are gonna be four percent, some of them are gonna be eleven, twelve percent.
And I'm looking for, let me see, the, the low is twenty-three sixty-six. The high is twenty-six eleven. She's already in the middle of twenty-four eighty-four. And like Pete's, when Pete's was like that, he did one percent, why didn't we do four on this one?
Because Pete was at the, um, uh.
Because he's only at level three, he was in the middle.
Right, but when it came to his position, I still had to take under advisement, because there's another new module. We just, uh, re-revised, which is the transfer station manager, and the differences in their responsibility, whereas one's a supervisor and a manager of the department. And then, if I went with the four percent, it would put them above, would.
I know, and I didn't, I wouldn't, I wasn't asking you so much about that one, because I think what I did on that one was fine, I just think this one may be excessive, four percent. Looking at the high and the low of what you filed in the range, she's already smacked down in the middle.
Okay.
So I could see like adding the one percent to this and not the four percent.
Okay.
And then doing that at, where did you add, which level did you add the four percent to?
Step two.
To step two, so it's twenty-five eighty-three.
You added one percent to step three for Pete?
Yes.
I'm thinking maybe, um, do two percent on that one, Lynn, is what my thought would be.
Are you okay with that, you guys?
I'll look at that now, um.
I'm just gonna, I'm just giving you my idea as I'm seeing this.
I, I mean, I'm kind of in the same boat, I mean, it's twelve out of nineteen, because your rank position here, I mean,
Okay.
I do feel kind of in the same boat on that one.
And you know, we, we're just gonna throw out our ideas now, we'll go back and look at you and kind of vote on it afterwards. Just, I'm giving you my own thought, I'm just going through.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a change on the first position. The next position is the second page, Renee, oh, actually, I have my, and I get the third page, bookkeeper. And again, this is a fairly new position, um, there's a little bit more responsibilities with it. The range is long nineteen seventy-three, high twenty-one eighty. She's there, that person's currently at step one, and I did add a four percent based on her location is out of fifteen, she's fifth from the bottom, or lowest. Some of the other towns up above, actually, it would be the lowest, because the other towns above, which have bookkeepers, were not included in this, um, report, I'm gonna save.
Looking at the low and the high on that one?
Yeah.
Just looking at nineteen seventy-three, so you're almost at twenty, and then twenty-one eighty, you're at twenty-two.
Yeah.
Um, she's at nineteen seventy-three, which we'll say is the low part of that.
Yeah, that's what she's at.
And you're at, which level did you do, step three?
No, I, yeah, step one.
You're at twenty fifty-eight?
Twenty, twenty fifty-two is the step, is a
What you brought it up to?
Four percent increase. So I applied that step one rate on step one, and I was, I was.
Okay, I'm good with that, that's, puts it right in the middle to start.
It does, it does, it does a good job with it.
It's kinda weird, because the other ones, we were looking at the, you know, step three or step two, when they did the increase, we went backwards, so.
Yeah, it's, it was very tricky, but just only to make it work so that it was.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I know, I'm just looking at our, trying to, and figuring this into a, whatever it is. We were starting that increase in what level we're starting at.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Differences.
But even if you look at that, look at where she ends up in steps, at the, uh, at the end of step six.
Twenty-three twenty-nine, which is.
Which is, you know, she hasn't even.
Above the other.
Really, and I mean, it's, it's really, no, it's, that's a reasonable increase, okay?
So that would move her two places.
Okay.
Or past the war, sorry?
Yep.
Twenty-three, and yeah, it would just be, um, above seven, it'll move her from five to.
Which is almost in the middle, smack in the middle.
Okay, so that.
Now, now, um, so her rate would be twenty fifty-two now?
Correct, because she's, needs to get to year two before she can move up to step two.
Okay, administrative assistant, go on.
Okay, then administrative assistant, which would be, um, Dunbar currently out of twenty-two, or sixth from the bottom, lowest. And this is an individual has many more years of experience, can, uh, multitask, that offers, um, coverage for multiple departments, including assessing department, which we don't have a department, um, set up for. So she has been with the town since, um, two thousand fourteen.
Now, going back to your rate chart here. Your low, your low is twenty twenty-one, your high is twenty-two twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Our turn rates twenty-two twenty-eight, so she's at the high level already.
Correct. So I apply the four percent to the twenty-two twenty-eight, which is step three.
Right.
And then I put that in, did I put it in the right spot? Yes, I put that step increase at, uh, step three, and then I added the two and a half for three additional steps, and reduced it in the other direction for two steps. So because she's got longevity, she would be moved up to step six.
But if you look at step six, I, I go back to, it puts her in the middle of the category of all the other towns, I mean, she, she's gonna move her up to maybe, um.
Why do you say in the middle, I see the high was twenty-two twenty-eight?
Well, she will be at.
Look at your first page chart. She gives you the low and the high rates on the first page. Twenty twenty-one and twenty-two twenty-eight, we're at twenty-two twenty-eight.
Right, but then we add four percent, which puts us at twenty-three seventeen.
Twenty-three seventeen.
I'm thinking we should be adding two percent to this one as well.
Yeah, but it'll, look, look where they asked, look where she is.
It only brings her up three more moves, and the.
Well, look at this, is this wrong over here when you've got the low and highs on your first page?
No, it's not wrong. So the low and the high are the current today rate of our three-step scale.
Oh, that's the low and high of our screen.
Right, what, what I'm saying, look, Dave, look to this page. And then you see where the highs end up? She, we're still just, she brings, she's gonna bring it up, our high will not be the twenty-five dollars, okay?
Yeah.
Look where twenty-five dollars falls in, it brings her up to like, uh.
Between seven and eight spots, seven and eight.
But you see what I'm saying? Not, not there, Dave, here, I don't, yeah, so she, he brings her.
What did you just do with your administrator?
It's on the bottom, I added it here, so we can go over it again.
And that's, and these numbers are a little bit lower than what I proposed for our office admin.
Oh, the se, no, on the second, was it on the amended, changed on the amended?
Nope, no, this is, yeah, so this like shows our P E admin top is
Uh, okay.
Twenty-three oh five, mine's twenty-five, twenty-three oh sixty-nine, it's not su- super far off.
Okay.
You know, I, I would almost, I, I like to, we can make them, make them, uh, match, I'd have no problem making them match.
To his recommendation?
No, to your recommendation.
Okay. Okay.
What, which, uh, which one would that be?
It would, in other words, take the P D, take the P D admin and match it to the administrative assistant.
Okay.
Similar duties, but, uh, you see, Dave, you follow?
Yeah, but let me look to, twenty-three sixty-six, and you go through down twenty-three seventeen.
Where are we looking at?
Well, I looked at, uh, your high and low and your.
And we're looking at administrative assistant?
Are we looking at something?
Oh, I'm sorry, I went on a little page, uh, you're right. Twenty twenty-one was your low, and twenty.
All right. And to me, I view it as one of the inequities, we gotta solve this town. No, so if we use the administrative assistant for our office administrative position, that would actually bring it up a little bit more than what I have.
I'm, I'm just doing it for, yeah, which, which I'm gonna agree with, I think. I mean, we're gonna, I think you should at least leave those even, because I know the person that does his job, regardless of who he gets, they have to have core, uh, information, they have done a lot of different.
What I'm, what I'm doing, Dave, though, what I'm doing is, I'm bring, I'm increasing the police department's budget.
Yeah, I know.
Okay?
Yeah, we'd have to increase that or bring this one down, just like.
I said bring it up. I wanted to match.
Okay.
Okay, let's go, okay, now that you go on, we're, I, Justin, you can keep it up?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Deputy Town clerk now.
Okay, Lynn, let me necessarily make sure that I reviewed this. The current, uh, wages for our three-step deputy town clerk is seventeen oh one low and eighteen eighty-four high. Uh, yes, and she's currently at step two. Oh, that might be wrong, step, it should be step one.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um.
I'm gonna look at sure.
And then I have, I think I have it, the last page, I had her, um, nine towns, she's fourth from the lowest. So I applied four percent to the step one, which brings it up to eighteen thirteen, and then applied the, um, two and a half percent to each step going forward.
I'm okay with that. That seems reasonable.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, it gets in the right range, you're still just in the middle.
Right.
I, I, I'd say that's good.
Okay, and then even though I have these.
I'll go back at this other one one more time. Yeah, that gets you, um, you're still in the middle on the bookkeeper one too, so that's.
Right, right, I don't wanna go, I, I don't wanna be the highest page, I don't wanna be lowest. Okay, Lynn, next one?
All right, I'm not sure that I included the secretary town office in this packet, but that range is eighteen fifty-four to twenty fifty-four, and again, when we have a position established, we don't wanna let it lapse, we wanna just carry the formula going forward, so I applied the four percent to step one, which brought it up to nineteen twenty-eight, and then I applied the two and a half percent.
Is that Drew Marie's job?
No, that's just a vacant one.
A vacant job.
Yeah.
Which one's Drew Marie, she's on the bookkeeper?
She's administrative assistant.
Okay. Can, for semantics, what, what would the secretary do?
Answer the phone. Answer the phone and know very little, so I really need to have.
Deal with that entry level, visitor, entry level, and what really.
Right, I can't start someone at step one in the, uh, twenty-two.
So you can almost leave that one right where you're at then, right?
Well, that's what I've done, is I've added the four percent, and then I've add, carried it into the formula.
Where are the town, where are the towns like that?
I don't have that.
Okay, I would, I would, I.
They, what you're saying is go back to the eighteen fifty-four and then add the two and a half all the way along.
Two and a half, yeah.
You know, start from right at eighteen fifty-four, but then add the two and a half all the way up.
Rather than four percent, because it's an entry level job, it's, the skill set is.
But the thing is, you're looking at the high end, I'm using the four percent on the low end.
I know what you're doing, but we don't have anybody in that position.
Right.
And I think that eighteen fifty-four gives you another starting rate, is, I don't wanna make that position so close to the office administrator assistant.
In other words, it's, it's a very low, the skill set is very minimal.
Right, so.
I wanna keep a final spread, David.
I understand, so the highest on that end is gonna be twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Right.
Rather than twenty-five dollars.
Right, but you're starting them off.
On step one.
Step one.
With four percent increase.
So if you look at step one, the difference is the high, the highest, I mean, the entry levels would be, the next one would be like twenty dollars, bookkeeper.
That's only like forty-two cents higher than the.
Yeah, it isn't much different, you wanna leave it there?
And the, where we've gotten behind is when we don't address every single position.
It's not much, it's not much different if you look at it, it's only twenty-two on the high, so.
Alright.
I just wanna maintain the position.
Okay.
And then, um.
I'm just saying, somebody could start off in your bookkeeper position, or your, um, office administrator job at the low end, and if you have a secretary that's been there for the longevity, they could be making more.
Yes, but the secretary has very low skill set.
Right.
But they could be making more.
Right, but that, but, yeah, but the thing is, you have a common laborer who's been there for ten years, it's gonna be more than, than anyone entry level.
And it's, there's always barriers a little bit, but no, tenure of time is, is, uh, commens, is, not rewarded, can be rewarded. Okay, recorded secretary, Lee.
Okay, so.
So I just wanna make it forward, I'm happy with the weight is.
Dave, yeah, okay. Recording secretary now.
Recording sec- secretary is stipend for meeting, um, we've, she's, she's always fallen under the same CPI cost of living that everyone else is applied to, but I think we need to recognize even these small positions that we rely on. Um, adding the four percent to the current wage, and then putting it in a, um, two and a half percent increase going forward, we that individual with longevity, um.
Got you.
She was hired in two thousand eighteen, where she would be at step three, which would be one twenty-eight, and then her like, unless they just added that one.
Okay, I have no problem with that, how many, do, we have two secretaries in town?
No, we only have two, yeah, and then the other one.
What is the BOA one?
Board of Assessors, Janice Van Bookard, that's an annual, um.
And the other one's monthly, so.
Right.
It looks much different.
Right, she gets it once a year in December.
And why aren't you dividing that by the meetings?
Because they take a couple months off during the year, and.
How many towns and boards of assessors meet in the year?
They, they should, when they have business, once a month, then a month, they're on the calendar for once a month, and then they're on like two or three months, and then they take off during the summer. There's no business.
So, alright, here's what goes. Can't really divide that one by the meetings, is there?
It's very, very involved.
Right.
So we're talking about anywhere from the range of step one, she's probably, she's been doing it for a long time, she's gonna get up to a thousand, like, almost eleven hundred.
Yeah, she's been with the town for many, many years.
Okay.
Okay.
Justin? Okay, the comments, good.
And then, again, I'm gonna work on this PD admin, and I'm gonna redo.
Well, I, I just think, I, I'm gonna free, free think here, I think the PD admin should have the same administrative, um, responsibilities as administrative assistant. Dave, your thoughts?
Well, I think it's gonna be at least the.
I would match, I would match.
Lee, no, when he puts the requirement for that job, he's gonna put huge requirements on if we ever have to replace the person.
Right, I would match it to yours, just, um, one for one.
I think if, if it's matched to administrative assistant, it actually brings my proposed number up.
A little bit, yeah.
Which, which is, I think, a good thing, obviously.
Well, if you ever have to go back up and advertise for that position and see what you're actually gonna get.
Yeah.
It'll be, uh.
And I hope that it can give me a way.
Right.
With any experience anyway.
And I know that in this police officer packet, where the administrative position is, um, she's second on the line page, and she, out of sixteen towns, she was seven, in the, uh.
Well, well, she was, okay.
And then the twenty-five will bring her up, well, she won't be at the twenty-five yet, but she'll between ten, like, seven eleven.
Which one are you on, the, uh?
Police Department, and then, just to see where she was currently. It'll bring her up to place between ten and eleven.
Yeah, a little bit on the high side. Yeah, but, well, that's only because she's got, well, uh, hi, the low, the entry level was, uh, we had eighteen fifty-four before.
Yeah, she's currently at the twenty fifty-four.
She's at top step three right now, and then with the new, uh, step, she would go to step, uh, four.
I have no issues with that.
So we're good to just make that change?
I have no issues with that at all.
Yeah, okay.
I highly recommend it. And, and Lee, I, I just wanna keep consistency from office to office.
Yeah.
And I think, and with the commensurate level abilities, I know, but.
But, but I, I totally understand, and with the information that I was able to pull from the internet, it may, really gave us some good solid numbers to really take a look at.
Okay.
Our positions.
Alright.
Was it an elected or town administrator?
Uh, Bill's gonna like to go quick, save the best for last.
Okay, um, the board asked me to pull all the elected officials, um, together, and determine which ones were coming up for, um, reelection in March, because we would be revisiting their positions before they win or run for the position. Um, so I have town treasurer and road agent, so the two attached, whoops, are in the back. And I didn't put them on the sheet yet, but you can see there, Dunbaran for the.
Town treasurer first?
No, the first one is Dunbaran, that's a, a road agent, elected, he's currently at the twenty-eight ninety-three. And I just, for numbers for the board to consider, added six percent, eight percent, and ten percent, to show you where he would fall in range with those other eleven or ten towns.
But she didn't put in where he is in those towns.
You see, she didn't, she.
He's, he's the first one at the very top, and is the lowest.
Why you see highlighted, but you, why you call it the lowest, you don't have these other ones?
Really, he's the lowest?
He is the lowest.
And what the ones that are twenty-two?
And this, this column.
I'm just giving you.
He's lowest on the high column.
Correct.
Well, we don't have, an elected person gets, doesn't have a step.
Okay.
But they, I, I just wanted you to see what the percentage of six percent, eight percent, and thirty percent would do for his current wage, and where it would adjust him, so in order to get to place number between five and six, you would have to give her ten percent.
I, I see that happening, I, I have the reason, that's, that's where he's the.
Yeah, I'm gonna circle that up then.
Okay.
Ten percent it is, okay, next one?
Alright, and then the one after that, that's coming up for reelection is the treasurer, and, uh, town, uh, towns, uh, twenty-one. She is currently in number sixteen.
On the high side.
She is, we, we did do a, a big increase for her, uh, some years back.
Twice, I recall.
It brought her in line with some of the others.
Remember we did that thing?
We actually didn't give her one, we totally know because she kind of won years before.
Right, but we, she ended up getting two of, we did give her a little bit more, it wasn't the full bunch of tests.
Oh, we gave her a little bit.
Absolutely.
About a couple more, yeah.
Yeah, so, I, you know, to be honest with you, I think that there's no change on there, I don't wanna.
Now, that being said, if you guys approve a COLA, you typically go across the board.
Correct.
Hopefully we're negative COLA this year.
So, so my point is that, even though you don't make an adjustment here, but you find that she's.
No, she'll still get COLA this year.
She'll get a COLA, and that's why I just wanna make clear.
Absolutely.
And if you haven't heard about it, I think this.
Okay, and the last one?
Alright, and the last one, that's for last, town administrator.
No, the board assessors.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes, um.
You want the town clerk?
Again.
Town clerk, honestly?
Well, town clerk is, oh, she, yeah, she's, uh, not up until twenty twenty-four.
Ah, twenty, okay, stay in.
So, the board assessors falls in the same category as the board of selectmen, they have rotating three-year terms, and how and when do you want to address it, I don't, in the past, they had a budget line, and it was divided by three. Last year, you guys had a budget line, and you increased it five hundred dollars. Um, do you want to make an adjustment this year and just apply it to all three?
In the past, I think.
You have to apply it to all three.
Yeah, in our earlier meetings, we said we would, any, a board which consists of like three members, we would do it once every three years.
Right, so if you do it in twenty twenty-two.
It would be up.
Or, or in this case, it would be twenty twenty-three.
It'd be up, three years, about twenty twenty-six would be the next time we do it.
What would ten percent keep on, like, give sixty-four dollars more? Why don't we do the same ten percent?
Ten percent?
Well, what, how's it, how they compared to the other, uh, towns?
Uh, based about that, huh?
I just thought ten percent is pretty minimal.
I agree.
And it keeps it even with what we're doing with the, uh, road agent, right? Which is still pretty minimal in his position.
But I wanna reemphasize, you know, there's only, there's only two exceptions to the, uh, election policy, because they can come up for election once every year, but we only review that once every three years, as we would do this, like, what?
Yeah.
Okay, Justin?
Alright.
You understand the concept, once every three years.
So I'll track it like I did here, review it every, every year, and then we'll put it back up on the discussion in three years.
Okay.
Last town administrator, I have collected information for fourteen towns.
Can we talk to more?
Dave, you work in a negative position?
I am, I am second to the lowest of all fourteen towns. Um, they range as high as a hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-six. I'm proposing a fifteen percent increase, which will move my position up one slot.
Can you answer any question?
Yeah.
Does the position you're looking at, um, any of these have the numbers included benefits on them, when they're looking at?
No, they don't, they never do, no, there's a survey that I pulled, has different pages for benefits.
This is, uh, sorry.
They're, they're just worksheets.
We didn't give worksheets to the age position.
Okay. Okay.
So, going back to yours now, Lee. Where are you at now, on yours?
I am.
You're second to the lowest.
Second to the lowest.
So we're not gonna bring you down to those other people.
I think we're gonna, one step is reviewed.
And look at it up here.
This has been long overdue, and I think because.
I'll move to the right, is where you're at.
I'm at sixty-seven seven seventy-six. Then with the proposed increase, it'll bring it up to seventy-seven nine forty-two. That will bump me up one town, which is population two thousand ninety-six, which is currently at sixty-nine seven twenty-five, or two seventy-five, excuse me.
Okay, gentlemen. This is just a graph at the back here, showing the different levels.
Yep.
So starting at that position is sixty-eight.
Right, so you don't have to find a new step.
Look, look, look at, look at the lowest, where, where we start, so I have sixty-eight, it's completely higher, so.
Speaking of that, would be low, so obviously, if you, if I were to retire and you were to replace me, the person that you would want to hire would probably have minimum four years' experience in municipal government, and you probably would have to hire them at step three, which would be seventy-two two forty-two.
No, you still correct, seventy-two.
That's what I'm saying, four years' experience would put them in that range there.
Okay, I, I'd say, as presented, I think it's fine. Justin?
I think it's reasonable.
I'm just putting this down, then we can go through it again.
Yeah, cause we're, the fifteen is so much more than any of the other departments.
Y- yes, but.
Looks like one that's been, been left aside for a while, but we did do, what, what did we do, five thousand, uh, to use that?
Right, it was.
Well, for me, right, because it was.
It was ridiculous.
Yeah, it was less than.
We did five, you know, and.
Yeah, it was several million.
That's what I just gave a hundred here. Right, I did, I think, um, we did, then we.
Wasn't.
We did it the year we adjusted the, uh, the, uh.
I think this is why, we're all on the. Okay. So, the question is, we got a stack up now, you wanna talk in non-public meetings, or you wanna?
I wanna go back to, um, high rate, one nine hundred one.
Okay.
I'm gonna do a little bit of advocating for Pete, only for the simple fact that, that I know some of these, um, towns have operators, and then they have somebody that can operate the, everything they have, including the, um, the greeter.
Yeah.
And I think that, um, I think even if we had to have another step level where we had equipment operator and then, um, greater operator, because.
In other words, uh, non-step level, descriptive.
I just, two description levels, so you get to your, uh, your laborer, driver, you've got an equipment operator, and then you've got greater and slash equipment operator, what I think we need, cause that's the level Pete's at, and.
Well, yeah, the thing is, when it has to go back, I think we have to go back to a job description.
Right, because we, we've given him a one percent increase, and, uh, I don't think it's nearly enough for what his capability.
Yes, but if you look at, look at, compared to his, he's, he's coming up to where equip, maybe equipment operator is starting, is starting is gonna be definitely higher than any equipment, heavy equipment operator. And his endpoint is gonna be, his endpoint's gonna be twenty-seven ninety-six.
Which is just.
Yeah, but I think there's a.
It's, it brings us to like one of the highest, although it's a small snap, snapshot, I agree with you. So, are you proposing that we bring him up higher, or?
Higher, yeah.
Okay, so, just, just so.
I wanna remember that.
Keep this in the back of your mind, this is gonna put him over Patrick Brown again, so we're gonna have to revisit that, and let me know if you want me to do that.
I, I'd say we try, I, 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 this is a major increase, and remember, he gets, I.
This doesn't make major increase, right?
No, but the thing is, it is an increase.
It is, because he's got two and a half percent for three steps, on top of the one percent.
He's not maxed out at all.
He's actually, uh, gonna receive eight point seven six percent.
Oh, okay.
Cause he's going right up to step six.
Right, low twenty-seven now.
Yeah.
So he's going from almost five dollars an hour more then?
No.
No, two, just over two, over two dollars and twenty-eight cents. And this year, and remember, he gets a stipend, uh, uh, which I can't really, the police department gets stipends too, so I can't really count that.
If you're, if you're up to the middle of those, you would.
I was gonna say.
You would want to count that.
That's hard, it's stipend.
That's not even enough.
No.
Let's leave it the way it is, so we don't have to look back.
No, but the thing is, on that one, I would say, um.
If we address that again, that we do need to look at the, um, you know.
Job description.
Three jobs, which should be the labor slash driver, even they, we should, we should have labor, and then driver, slash laborer.
In fact, in fact, one of the things that, uh, the road agent was, when he was appointed, was potentially another driver.
Right, cause you could have a laborer that just chips trees or something, that rhymes with something, and it doesn't even try to, you know?
But we have that on the second page, which we'll bring it up already.
Okay.
If we ever expand.
Driver, and laborer, we have that already, so.
I think we're, we're good.
Good, after changing the hiring, everyone's gonna have to break it into three different steps, uh, laborer, driver, and then, driving with CDL, and then, like, PD.
Like this, just like an operator, and then a C D L.
Greater operator, yeah.
Okay, so, but for now, I think we're good, and I'd like to take some guidance, that the, uh, road agent, just a little more, can help us prepare job descriptions, if needed. Okay, um, I disagree.
So, I guess the, the final question is, how do we proceed with this information, I bet?
We're gonna do that.
Today?
Yeah.
I think a lot of the departments are looking, then, I've already received two budgets that are ready, he said his is ready, the only thing that's outstanding is the, um, salary.
Okay, well, let's just finish up, police department, the only thing changed, we have the police department is the error admin assistant.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you have a bunch of changes, okay. Um, let's go with, um, administrator, we said that was fine, we just got the last one we did. Let's, elected officials, uh, we had two of them, we had town, uh, town treasurer, road agent, board obsessives, all addressed. I have no issues with any of those, if we go too fast, you'll be, Joan.
George.
All right, I'll back off. Jeez. All right, the, the busy one we have to go through is the um.
I don't think any of them are that busy.
No, I think um.
I have, I have been on.
Really proposed as she had.
Right.
Except for, uh, we did two percent on office, administrative office.
Yeah.
Change that one down to two percent, like we discussed.
Yeah.
And, and bring up the uh, the PD, yeah, then, to match the administration, admin assistant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you approve the ten percent on the road agent.
Right, you approve all the others.
All along, yeah.
I think you put it together and send it up, that's good, then we got it. That's, that's basically everything. Or in class, and, and may I ask, um, implementation, Dave?
Yes, I, I was thinking about that, and uh, you know, David, I know you brought up a, a point last year, you wanted it last week, you wanted maybe for start in March, I'd say just start in Jan, effectively January, but the elected officials for our discussion are gonna be in January, why do we have to have it separate, separate for a year? Elected officials versus the.
I was just looking for time for their budgets to get warranted and picked up through the.
Right, but the thing is, this is not gonna be a huge amount of money.
So typically what happens, Dave, is we run on a default budget from January to March. And then if the budget passes, then we can imply in retro the first couple of weeks of the year. If the budget fails, then we're already in the same weight, wage that we were at before, we went to the voters. So it's not gonna hurt anything with the way we've managed the payroll from January to March.
You go back to a default budget, but if we vote on a pay increase, the pay increase doesn't get changed back. As a board of select, if we agree with pay increase, and we make it retroactive to January first, that goes through whether it's voted or not, we've decided that in a meeting.
Okay.
Our budget would have shortcomings somewhere else to make that money.
You have to shift it, okay, yeah, I have.
Okay, so under our maintenance fund, we have to get shift in the hourly wages all over the department, so.
Yeah.
That's the only part. The town doesn't, the thing is that, the legislative body approves it entirely, it's our job to, to destroy.
Sorry, we're, when, once we agree as a select board here for the reasons, I'm going through regardless of the budget, it doesn't default the wages back.
Okay.
So that's the part I was thinking of, that I do wanna go back to um, January first. But um, Chris is an issue that we're gonna bring out, wanna hire.
Yeah, we're talking non-public.
And then if we end up going with that higher, um, you know, effective sometime around that range, then we probably need to have.
Right, and I, I don't wanna be uh, favor one department over the other, I think we have to be consistent here.
So I think we have to hash that out a little bit more, and we'll do it during our non-public, because we have to work on that, to hire to do it.
You see, I'm gonna be consistent, uh, not with the police department, but the thing is, if I favor the police department, um, due to a, an issue you have, I don't wanna have an admin assistants and deputy town clerk or everyone else, uh, why are they getting treated so?
And I, and I think, um, one of the numbers I can't, you know, it's a moving target, depending on who we hire, when we hire, but they calculated approximately two and a half months from January one to essentially town meeting, and the cost savings, specific to our agency, covering ten employees, probably the, the biggest increase personnel-wise, was like approximately six thousand dollars, um, so it's not, and I'm gonna try to make light of it, but it wasn't a tremendously huge.
Right, but I wasn't worried just about yours, since I was worried about, you know, the whole thing as being.
Absolutely, yeah.
Cause it would, it might take and destroy a part of our maintenance budget if it didn't pass it, not that I foresee anything not passing at town meeting anyway.
But I, I think we're being, um, uh, we're not shooting for the moon, we're not paying our employees top end compared to other towns, I think we're going for the middle, we're being reasonable in our approach.
And we, we've actually kicked this down the bucket, Mike, for the five years I've been here, we've been, we've been having our uh, policy meetings, we haven't really adjusted pay.
Not at all.
For years now.
Yeah, it took almost two years.
And we do one here and one there, and we never really.
And we would do the squeaky wheels.
We always, we always, certainly when we're throwing.
Right, and I think this is a, I think this is a reasonable solution, Justin?
Uh, just so you know, when the, we're doing the um, uh, we're doing the people that are um, elected officials, the year that their term is coming up, so we did the ones that are ending for next year, their terms.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but we did do, not that your, uh, your person that works in your department isn't, but we did um, take everything that you work with, lean with, lean on in that department, for your department, for your person.
Now, there's your deputies getting a raise.
Oh, thank you, well, may I speak now, I was, I'm sorry I got here.
About the raise, we already did it.
You already did it?
Yeah, we did it to the full volume, we leaned talked about, so.
We did, we talked, we did, I was gonna say, I don't think we talked.
No, we.
These are the rates now, add four percent, so, and then put, apply it here, two and a half, two and a half, two and a half, so that was six step instead of three step.
And now we've looked at all the towns that were around that.
Right, what we're doing is, we look at, um, we're going in the middle, we're not going for top end, we're not going below.
This could be the time then, since we haven't decided, but I, I've worked on this a while on back, this is the job description for the deputy, and this, I had gotten these figures um, early on when I was looking for a deputy. Thank you, look, she is of the office personnel, the low end, and what she's.
This is where she's. Why are you close? For our population, she's at the four hundred and eighty-nine.
Okay, and I mean, and I definitely factor in population, but there's so many other things to consider there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, sometimes, sometimes I just forget them, and, but these are the numbers, I would, I would like to see her wage brought up more in line with the secretary.
Which is, and on my scale.
Is um, Joelle Murray.
No, she's our secretary, she's admin assistant.
Secretary of nineteen twenty-eight.
I, I would like to see her brought up higher because of the tremendous responsibility that that position carries, and it really does carry a lot.
Looking right now.
Can you, can you bring her up a little higher?
Here is a four percent, so it's a four percent increase today, okay, and then is a two and a half percent increase for each step, for six steps. So she says step one, so it adds two and a half, two and a half, two and a half.
So the bottom line would be.
Here, she would be at eighteen.
Right.
Right here.
But she's still, if you look at all of that, she is still the lowest paid, and I think that the degree of responsibility that goes with that position really deserves more.
So if you brought her up to the secretary.
Right, can we at least bring her up to secretary?
Which is nineteen twenty-eight, then going forward, it would be the same.
I, I'd be reasonable with that, I think.
Yeah.
Because remember what we said about secretary, secretary you said is the entry level, no skill set.
Right.
In fact, I don't miss, I, I agree with that.
And thank you, and, and like you interviewed Jennifer.
With secretary, to you, Lee.
You know the skill set and, and how lucky we were to get somebody with that skill set.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna update this, move it to the nineteen twenty-eight, and then she'll have six steps to go to.
And you have a step, so it's only get even more, or, 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 over ten years.
So, yeah.
So she goes from uh, starting, it's, she's a step two right now, right?
No, she's in step one.
The step one.
She goes from uh, Debbie, from seventeen.
Eighteen thirty-two. Eighteen thirteen to nineteen twenty-eight, right?
Okay, yeah, well, that's how much she's at, I don't know.
Correct, she's currently at seventeen oh one.
That's what I'm saying, seventeen oh one, and she's gonna again go up to nineteen, okay?
Thank you very much, I, I just think it's a little more accurate.
No, that was a good point you brought up, and I, I, I think I agree with that.
And that's why I included the job description too, so you can see really the skill set.
Cause she obviously has to learn a lot from there.
Yes, she really does, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, I'd say, I'm in favor as we presented them, I want Dean to clean this up, and uh, we can send it up, I think we got, you got the guidance, everything there. Okay, so let's uh, I'm gonna pronounce it public, if the public has a comment on this?
I just have one, one common slash question, um, not to, to be a thorn in the board's side.
No, okay.
He's ready to meet for his budget next week.
Uh, couple weeks, um, uh, so these are independent of the, the COLA? Give the board know roughly what the COLA might be, and just.
We're gonna work on that tonight.
Okay, beautiful, I, I apologize.
All right, um, just, my general philosophy in COLA, and the thing is, I can be overwhelmed by my two colleagues here.
Yeah.
Uh, since we're addressing uh, base wages.
Yeah.
We are not gonna go with nine to twelve.
That's right, I completely understand.
Yeah, so don't be, don't be expecting this guy, we're gonna go something.
I won't stay at the top. Since, since John, you know, why don't we hop right into the COLA?
I have no problem.
My thought, I would have, we went to two percent, the town runs up to three percent, where at the town meeting.
Right.
I'm happy with the increase I've already seen here, to stay at that three percent, stay even, I know that COLA's at much higher, but we are addressing all of these, which are town jobs, which are typically very stable jobs, with very good benefits.
Great.
And so, so we've addressed that, so that's where, at my point, I'd like to stay at the three percent, because I don't wanna go down lower than that, because the town is, the actual voters have told us they wanna be at, at three percent minimum, but addressing these others with the range between two and fifteen percent on some of these cases, I think that that's a good range to stay in, at least for this year.
I would challenge you there, social security went up eight point seven percent this year, just social security alone, this is for people in fixed income, so went up eight point seven percent with no increases in Medicare, so that means they're gonna get a substantial raise this year. I'm not looking at eight point seven percent, I think that's too high, and in light of the fact that we did raise wages, base wages, however, I'm looking at more like a anywhere between four and seven, six percent, so, it's in the middle, five percent, so I'm, I'm zeroing in on like a five percent pay raise for COLA across the board. Justin?
No, I'm, I'm still, I'm gonna go on three, three or four percent, just because we've just adjusted everybody's wage scale, just to kind of, you know, get up to that pay that we need to be.
Okay.
How about I meet, how, can I meet you halfway, how about, I'll go four percent then, do I do four and a half?
How much time to cut out, please, it's a nightmare.
No, 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 but the thing is, I, I just feel, I, I just feel three percent is almost a, a slap in the face to employees, three percent when, when, I know, I think.
Yeah, we're just adjusting everybody's.
Yes, but that's, we haven't done that for, we haven't done that, we're about ten years, I'd say eight years overdue on that. And you look at eight years of consistent, of no, of minimal adjustments to any salary, where some of them went up a lot, some went up the middle, and the thing is, the ones that went up, didn't go up that much, it was their new hires.
If I were gonna go higher on COLA, I'd have to go tighter on these numbers, and I'd rather stick with these base numbers than what we have them.
Okay, I just feel that, I wouldn't be surprised if you had something come off the floor, that, that, oh, it's, it's eight point seven percent social security, let's give their employees eight percent, and then where are we, we, with three percent, would be that much of a scrooge?
Well, if, if the voters decide to do that, like, there's nothing we can do.
Oh, I, I know, but I think it's, I wanna, I think it's a due diligence.
I think if any of the voters who watched this meeting, and we're gonna try and tell them that, that voting is well, why we did that, call them out, but, you know, we're here to donate the taxpayer dollars, I think if we tell all of these numbers out, we'd be surprised how much this is actually, gotta bring the budget up, so we have to look at that.
I understand, I understand. Then I, I, then I would ask, um, Lean, three, four, and five percent, what would they, be, be the impact of a three, four, on the, just the salary line for that employees, can we figure that out tonight?
No, not tonight.
No, I think that'd wanna work, you know?
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Okay.
But I will look at it, and then, now the three percent, four percent has to be also include in increases on the after-retirement payroll taxes, social security. It's a lot of work.
Right, but the thing is, uh.
But I, I can get it for you.
But before, I don't wanna, no, I don't wanna go down the path, I think we have to get the guidance out, so.
I know, but the issue, the, the issue is. I will go up to the four percent and save her all that work.
Okay, but remember, what's the majority of our workforce? Our. So we don't have no actual retirement, we don't have to pay, they don't get medical benefits, they don't get dental benefits, they get minimal, minimal benefits, and the thing is, uh, this town has been tightwads when it comes to uh, hiring a full-time employee, oh, we're gonna get a part time, because we get away, paying them cheaper. They get no benefits, and the thing is, that's been a, that's been a, I think, a, a hint, we've been, hands have been tied, when we wanna get like a employee for the transfer station, why do they leave the transfer station, there's a myriad of reasons, but some of them are, I'm getting benefits out of this new job, we had a great employee left, and why do they leave? Full-time benefits, retirement plan, we didn't offer.
They're all coming back.
No, not that. Uh, so, so, so the thing is, I'm trying to sell my four percent, I, I, Dave, I have it, Justin, do I have the four percent?
A little forward, but I think we're, we're doing, when it comes, yeah, we're doing both sides of, of the wage.
I understood, okay.
So I think that's. I can tell you, Mike, I've worked in a lot of places, I've never gotten this end, and the COLA all in one year, anybody I've been working.
But the thing is.
I've been working for a lot of years.
I understood, but the thing is, um, I'm, click social security?
I, I understand.
I click social security, and I'm looking forward to my eight point seven percent raises here.
I understand that the COLA is, you know, way high for everything else, but we're, you know, we're trying to adjust a couple things here at a time, and it's a.
Understood.
It's a big fight.
And, and that's why, that's why you're not seeing me following my sword for a five or six or a seven or eight percent, and so I, I am trying to meet you halfway.
And I think, and I think we've asked our department heads to keep up level services again.
Yeah.
Which is a hard thing for them to continue doing too, so it's, you know, we're doing as best we can here for the.
So, uh, I, I make a motion, we go with four percent cost of living raise, cost of living adjustment for the, all employees to include elected officials. That's my motion. Okay, throw the discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Now, don't turn for the, edit this out of the video. Uh, no, I'm only, I'm just, in, in all seriousness, I just think, um, um, our employees have families, our employees uh, work hard for us, a lot of them are part-timers, they don't get any additional benefits, they don't get healthcare, and I think we need to take care of our part-timers.
You, you know, we did adjust the part-time positions as well.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, okay, all right, let's move on. I'm gonna do mailbox now.
That's a lot of paperwork, that's a lot.
Okay.
You already need to take a pill, like?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, excuse me, gentlemen.
All right, this one, not happy to provide.
Talk about the drywall, Dave. All right, um, I had a company committee get some talk about this previous, and um, guy Philip on from Merrimack Drywall LLC has donated all of the labor from the second floor of the town hall slash library to uh, apply the three drywall and the uh, taping of it. So, that was very generous of him, um, I forwarded the email over, I think, to Lean.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, well, Mike is doing that, there's something else I wanna talk about, um, there's a further email that I forwarded off to Lean, and asked us, Myers to forward the actual copy of it, um, I kind of knew this going forward, and we had kind of been skating under the fence here, hoping we wouldn't get one. The electrical engineer came back out to size all of the transformers and loading for our, um, for our pump, for our sprinkler system, has given the bill, well, a little late, to the architect, the bill to design that fire extinguisher design, and all the associated electrical engineering that were involved with it, and the EverSource could use to do their transformer, the electrician could use to size his panels up and everything they needed, the bill come up to nineteen thirty-seven fifty. I figured we would get bills for it sooner or later, and we did.
I was hoping it would skate under.
But that was approved by the architect?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have to, we have to, you have to make a motion on this.
Is that the exact amount?
Yeah, you have the email right there, right?
Okay.
Somewhere.
Maybe one of them.
I'm gonna say so. Well, I'll make a motion to um, pay the bill, if that's Myers approved, for the electrical engineering for the um, fire sprinkler design of nineteen thirty-seven fifty.
I'll second, any further discussion on that? I think as, um, just, we knew that we were, we have some incidentals, and so.
Well, I knew this one was gonna come sooner or later, I was hoping maybe he put it into the original, but leaving.
Can I have a quick question, oh, I'm not sure if it's part of the motion, but I guess this part will come from Billy Minkins.
Yes.
Obviously, okay, and then I have a question on the first email, the donation.
Okay, go ahead with that. No, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor of this action?
Aye, aye. Nation on the labor, I was hoping the board of smart men could give him a letter to, um.
Well, that's what I do.
Have a write-off.
Is that the email right there, the one for the donation?
Yes.
Okay, so who's picking up that one?
A company called Merrimack Drywall Incorporated.
Right, the cost on it, it was twenty thousand.
He's, he's got a, the cost for the materials for me to calculate.
Okay, so I just wanna confirm that you're still gonna forward that to them, so.
I'm gonna have you do it.
I can do that, okay.
To Tom.
Yep.
And add on to his life.
Ask Merrimack Drywall for a, for a uh, uh, a value that they would, you know, and that without, with the taxes we put.
I know that, and Terry would run a, his price was fifteen.
Fifteen?
So we.
Okay.
It's a big savings.
We could, we can write a letter and include minus, minus, uh, say thirty-four, thirty.
I'd like to get over his tax, if he's.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, okay.
So if you could send that to Tom, um, if we could get that as a donation from Tom, we could supply that to um, Merrimack Drywall, and that way he could get the material going.
Okay.
They can, actually, they can start working anytime now too, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Inside is coming on the way up.
I did ask the electrician, um, this week, there were, there's a couple outlets up high, I'm not sure why, one by the stage and one on the wall. And I don't believe there's any power to them. I've asked the electrician to verify that, because if there's gone, we'll cover right over them. They'll put a cover on like a box.
Sometimes they have clocks and stuff like that.
Yeah, that could have been it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, I don't believe there's any power to it, and there's a strip on one side, a metal strip.
Yeah, I'd rather disconnect them.
Yeah, so I'll have him make sure we do that.
All right. Anything else, David?
Um, there is one other item. I, um, met with the guys that are installing the, um, Lula lift.
Yes.
The handicap lift access. Um, I brought them over to the back corner where we were gonna try and use the Lula that Tom Casano had currently. He sent me pictures of the Lula that he had to donate before he moved it, brought it over here, which I'm glad he did. Big orange sticker on it, and the guys noticed that flagged it as defective equipment not to be used. I think it was a residential one, they were trying to use it as a commercial application, which would be the same thing here. So, um, but one thing is, the Lula was a straight in and a straight out. And where that was up in the back right-hand corner, it actually has to go straight in, and then they call it a ninety because you come off the side of it.
Right.
So it's a different Lula design altogether, so I'm meeting tomorrow morning at nine. Not Tom, but I'm meeting the people that installed this lift here to get an accurate price for the Casanos for the one in the corner.
Cause I was certainly waiting, one way or the other, they were gonna make sure they had a lift for the stage.
So, um, I'm gonna meet with them and design a lot to get an additional phone line for that one up there, an additional power for the one that's up there.
How can someone be stuck up there? I mean, that's not, it's open, oh, I see what you're saying. If there was someone who was by themselves. Why would that, the stage need a phone line?
They both need a phone line.
They both need phones.
Emergency video phone lines.
Well, you would think that, can you tie them in together? One line from.
For separate locations. Each individual phone line, it's all state monitored now, the state comes in, and those guys have done, the state comes in, inspects, and says it's okay.
Is, is it actually closed, the closed, uh?
No, it's only waste lines.
Did you agree with my email that Dunbar telephone has provided those lines? I think they, they're the ones that said we should be providing the lines.
They always provide the lines to the building, and the electrician is, knows he has to run it to the unit.
Okay.
In fact, his wires are already there.
Okay. Thank you, David. Okay, all right.
Soon as I get that, I'll let you guys know.
Thank you, thank you. All right, moving on, we gotta thank you, um, from, to the cemetery trustees, it looks like we have a, um, a family member, someone who's deceased and been interned at our Dunbar Cemetery, and she was very pleased with the, uh, the way the cemetery looks. Great, thank you. Make sure this gets to the cemetery trustees. Okay, you got it, okay, great. You wanna talk a little bit about it? Well, as I said, cemeteries have been, uh.
They've lasted for many years.
And she was very thankful, she had visited it every year. Um, and came back this year without her mother, because her mother passed last year. Wish her mother had seen it now, now that it's been revamped and cleaned up and taken, taken care of. All right, we got a notification for the, uh, this is a, we've had this before, this is about the Dunbar and Merrimack watershed, we have something for FEMA. Talking about the same thing. We were supposed to get some maps on that. We have, we have those maps. Everybody was gonna get some maps, I think.
This is kinda be important when he comes up for his budget.
There's a meeting December thirteenth at nine AM, if we wanted, it's not mandatory, but we're being invited to it. Just, uh, talking about, maybe. The digital flood insurance maps, the issue, and, uh, as you recall, we get some dollars, not a lot of dollars, but we have a small piece of the dollars which are reimbursed when people were further down south from us, i.e. Massachusetts. We get a little bit of, I think we got sixty-eight thousand this year, Lean?
This is written out to the chairman, I'm not gonna nominate, but I can ask people to go to meet.
Well, I think, it's, it's, it's online meeting. But Woody just been invited, uh, also.
It's amazing how small a flood plain that Dunbar actually has, being that the flood control is over here, the majority lives in the wear.
True, but when you look at the history that I, that last took a lot of time pulling together, there's a hundred and forty-four lots that were residential lots in that section.
A factor two.
Yep, yeah, that we lost, you know, had to.
I, I'll probably attempt that on July.
Okay.
Since I can do that, I'll wait. And, uh.
You wanna take that card?
Hey, you might take that one.
Okay.
And I don't think there's gonna be anything to it, unless they send out a check to us. All right, uh, we got a gentleman for the energy committee. I think we both.
I don't think so.
Okay, he's gonna, he's gonna come up with a membership. He's gonna have nomination papers, I believe.
Yeah, well, he has to make a recommendation to the board, then I communicate to Linda. She wrote her appointment papers, and then you sign it.
Yeah, I, I, I have no problem. We can make the motion to accept them when they have the papers. Pass that to, goes to Linda.
Good to see some new people.
He, uh, he's a, uh, he was out, he was at the last meeting for the energy committee meeting, and, uh, he seems very knowledgeable.
Yeah, my Brian Watson?
Yeah, he seemed to be a good addition. All right, we have, um, from the laboratory director, we have a, uh, a letter.
Mary did call me about this. Um, they have a couple of programs right now, they wanna do a temporary meeting place. The church has told them that they are more than welcome to use their community over here. And Mary wanted, just get the blessing from the selectmen, buy and use that area. Um, her biggest concern is if something happened to a little kid, would they have insurance? You know, that is a public place, they have public people, they're all time, I'm sure they have insurance in life.
And it's still covered also, there are property law companies as well.
So I did have an issue with it, a few guys.
Okay, thank you. All right. We also have a, uh, Lean's office prepared, uh, we have a list of employees who are, uh, are coming up to the year end. We have vacation to be used, we have comp time to be used, and remember, we don't carry comp time over to next year. Vacation, we don't, no one carry it over unless it's by exception.
Right, comp time, uh, can be by exception as well.
Right, right.
Not comp time, comp time gets paid out at the end of the year. Comp time, is there overtime that they?
How many of people we looking at, like just one for the whole?
Two.
PDs, PDs burn out.
PDs.
They're on his vacation as well.
So I sent out a memo back in November sometime, um, reminding people that the, uh, end of the year was coming up, and if they had concerns about getting outstanding lead, that they needed to bring it to the board, the board's attention to discuss it, so that you guys can advise them on what to do with that additional lead that they haven't used up. So many of the departments, like the building department, highway department, police department, have all used our planning between now and the end of the year to use, use up their time.
So we're talking about, uh, the transfer station?
Yeah.
Your department?
Myself.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's it?
Um, and we did get an email from the transfer station department this week that said that he left it up to the board to decide whether they wanna pay him. I know that the transfer station, just from my own background, they've had new employees, they've had to train, have been able to use up all their vacation. It's not for the fact that they don't want to, they just suddenly unable to with the new employees and whatnot, so.
I'd be willing to carry, we normally don't let him carry the full year, we normally.
Yes, take it in January. We usually have thirty to forty-five days. But I, I would let him, um, I would like to pay up current flows and leave his comp times, I think he wanna use out of the days.
Okay, the emails, are there any other?
Right. I would like to request that the remaining thirty-one hours of vacation be, uh, paid up at the end of the year, Cali, I have no problem with that. Seven-one hours of vacation.
That's mine.
Yeah.
Okay. Woody's, should be right there.
Exactly, correct. So I have a hundred and twenty hours of vacation and forty hours of comp time.
He's gonna use eighty, I think he's.
Right. But if he uses a vacation, uh, comp time will be paid for. I have no problem with that.
Which is what I have to do by law.
Right.
Comp time is paid for, and let's pay it for his additional forty hours.
So what's left is forty hours?
Yeah.
Cause I went forty, he's gonna use eighty. You, you guys are okay with his first, the extra forty? Okay.
Now, there's, I wanna stop the first year.
Catch him up.
Yeah, and then just start.
First of the year, and the same goes for you, Lean, you're gonna take, take those in.
Correct, I would like to take, and I don't typically do this this time of the year, but again, in my situation, it's, there's a lot of training and not many hours to.
Understood. No, it, it, it kinda coincides with the next item in the inbox.
So I'd like to request to take off the twenty-first through the twenty.
No, how about the nineteenth through the twenty-third?
Nineteenth through the twenty-third, but that will leave the board, um, holding a short meeting to open bids for, um.
The twenty-second. Everything I asked.
Now, why can't we open them bids on the twenty-ninth?
The bid was already sent out, posted, and said that they'll be in on the twenty-first by three o'clock and open on the twenty-second.
Okay. So we'll meet the twenty-second just for that, for that one agenda.
And then put off the project discussions for the week after, if anyone has.
So we can send some flows, I'm gonna pay those in. And I'm leaving the inbox, the Merrimack Hillie budget, which we just paid a check out today, if you saw the checks this morning.
I did.
It's over a million dollars to the lovely county of Merrimack.
The sheriff that was in here.
Company's salary. All right. All right, Lean, could you send this, uh, from the building department? I'd like to have everyone, all boards, like, and read, I said, and some things of roads.
Okay, yeah, if you gave us a good example, some templates for us to use going forward.
How can we get the email on it?
I don't know, she put that in the basket, and I only went through it.
Can you send that to us?
Yeah, I just, I just sent, I just sent that.
But she didn't send it to me, so I don't have to ask her to forward it to all of us.
Yeah.
She just made a copy.
And she's, she's gonna incorporate these templates into, uh, for future.
This, that should be in our office through the Sludman, so that you have all the.
You can get it all, you know, it's, it's a lot of reading. All right. Public comment, public comment, Linda?
Um, no, really public comment, I just have a question.
Sure.
Regarding the vacancy on the board recessors, has any, have any decisions been made on that yet?
We're waiting for guidance from you.
Okay, I did do some research, and whoever the board select man appoints will serve until the next election. And then, um, the position will be open for the unfulfilled balance of that term. Uh, Mary's term would have been up in twenty twenty-four, so if the board appoints someone now, they fill that seat until March. That seat will go up for somebody to, to run.
Similar to what's been at the second.
A one-year term, right, be a one-year term. So on the ballot in March, you'll have a recessor for a three-year term, which will be Jacques. Cause his term will be up, and then you'll have that position for the one-year term that's just filling out Mary's.
Are there any recommendations for, I'd like to get any recommendations from Shark and the board?
I'll reach out to them.
Okay, I'd like to, um, gentlemen, do you have anybody from my, to get their recommendations? Thank you, Linda, for researching. I know we were like, um, we weren't sure, last week we discussed it briefly, and we knew you were researching it, so thank you.
Right, because different, uh, it's, you have to jump all over the statutes to find one that's specific to it, but this is what I found on this.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Chief, to you. I'm, stick around though, I'll be here. I'm gonna bring it back to the board. I'll start with Lean.
I have, um, met with the second electrician who's doing, um, a quote for the exit lines that are, lengths that are required, and I did make me the second, um, phone message with the third electrician. That individual hasn't called back yet, so hopefully we'll have two that are comparable in price, and if the third one doesn't respond.
Such as?
The board can still make a decision with the two that we have.
This, for this building?
Oh.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, we have to address quite a few of them, so.
Okay, anything else? Justin? Don't have anything?
Um, I did get a call back from our, uh, company.
Okay.
Only saying they could do the.
Monitoring industry.
Monitoring of the elevator, no problem. And when I told him what type of monitoring it was, he said, oh, 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 I'm not gonna happen.
So he has a.
And he didn't call it back. The guys told me that when the elevator, and there's only a couple of specific companies that are on top of that new code. Most of the other ones are not. Not saying they can't get on top it, not saying they can't do it, just they're not, they're not set up to do it, because it's an audiovisual, uh,
Wow.
alarm system, that's what that dedicated phone line is for.
Gotcha.
So it's, I don't know, it's called a FOX or something, I have it in my notebook.
So the line we get from the Dunbar tunnel, is it gonna be, have to be fiber optic?
They only turn them.
You know the phone line?
Phone.
I don't know that. Okay.
Old town, old town was in the.
They spent like ten million dollars doing that a few years ago, that's all.
No, no doubt.
We don't have a different phone company come in and do it, that's why. So, yeah, they already are, so anyway, they, um, I'm waiting to hear back from them. The only thing is, um, if we put this company through the learning curve, we may delay that use of that thing, so I just want to. One, we'd hear back from them, and be savvy on it, because they're, they're gonna be functional, and we won't be able to get it inspected by the.
When is functional? When can, so the line has to be in and functional before the state comes in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's easy.
Now, the line will be all hooked up, it's just the monitoring portion, we have to sign a contract for the town.
Right.
To monitor it through their services, and.
So.
They do them, they haven't done these new ones, it sounded like, so he's, he was digging into it with a supervisor.
Now, that's the one that currently does our one?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Anything else, David?
No.
Okay.
I got one thing, um, I wanna talk about, um, normally every year, we, this for the last several years, we've been giving gift cards to our, uh, employees. And I used to talk about that a little bit. We, we, in past, we've done Christmas, and somehow we have Thanksgiving and Christmas, and we did not do it for Thanksgiving this year. I'm gonna double the amount for Christmas this year. And, uh.
They were twenty-five, twenty-five, right?
Right. I would do a fifty for Christmas. I'm compared with that.
This would be for, uh, basically all of our employees.
They're part full-time, right?
Part full-time, as of today, December first, employees on record as of today. I don't wanna have an employee who worked two days in July come in, and I work part-time. If they're working today, Lean, on today's payroll, that's the one who won't pay. Does that seem fair?
And, uh, we do elected officials, right?
No, we did not.
No elected officials.
So we don't work.
We don't work.
We don't work.
We just come to, come to work, we just come here to have fun. Okay, now, uh, but I think, uh.
Yeah, we did kinda miss that during Thanksgiving, I forgot all about it.
Working by my turn. Well, consensus, gentlemen?
Yes.
Lean, make it so.
Okay.
And let me see, and also, I just wanna reemphasize, on December twenty-second, we'll have an abbreviated meeting with a very short agenda to open up the bids.
Yes.
And the thing is, the bids are, they'll be.
MSW and C and D, and Woody's already, um, advertised it, posted it in several places, and he's hand-delivered it to different locations that he thinks that we can possibly do business with.
Okay.
And we're hoping that the current company will sharpen the pencils a little bit.
Lean, I just wanna, for the, for the record, that's the only thing I wanna be, uh, talking about that evening, and if you wanna have video, it's up to you.
I will be here.
Okay. I, I think that would be appropriate, you know, I mean, it does not really need to be a meeting. I'm just making it courtesy. Okay, um, I think we have a non-public going to, requested by Chief Rummanar for personnel. So for, uh, for her, say, ninety-one dash alpha, subpar paragraph three, room number two, alpha and bravo, I'd like to go to non-public.